Okay, we're ready to begin now. Welcome to the City of Cupertino Councilmember Candidate Forum. My name is Jeff Mo and I am President of Cupertino Rotary. Cupertino Rotary, in partnership with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, is happy to host this event as part of our community outreach and community support. Today's campaign panel will be moderated by Tracy Edwards from the League of Women Voters. And now, let me introduce our co-host, Deb Feng, from the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks, Jeff. The fiscal year 2023 local budget for local businesses contributed $31 million in sales tax and $6.5 million in temporary occupancy tax to the city revenues, thereby resulting in public services and a very healthy city budget. The Chamber organizes many community events such as Lunar New Year, Holy Night Market, and our upcoming Diwali Festival, connecting our businesses with our community members, which is essential also to a thriving economy and a community. So I wanted to thank all of you for coming today to learning about your candidates for City Council and your future policymakers, for this also is essential for a thriving city and community. Thank you for being here.
And now, for the main event, let me present Tracy Edwards from the League of Women Voters. Please give her a round of applause.
Thank you all. As was said, I'm Tracy Edwards. I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sunnyvale. Now, before we get to the purpose of the forum, just a very little bit of information about the League and about voting in November. The League has been empowering voters and defending democracy for over 100 years. We were founded in February of 1920, just six months before women won the right to vote. We have two distinct functions done separately through two different corporations, one that does voter education, of which today's event is an example, and the other, which after extensive study, takes positions and then, as appropriate, advocates for the passage of laws. Now, shifting to your November ballot, the California ballot can be challenging. So we recommend using Vote 411, formerly known as Voter's Edge. Vote 411 is a comprehensive, nonpartisan online guide to elections, covering federal, state, and local elections. It also covers state and local ballot measures, and it includes campaign finance information. To find Vote 411, simply type Vote 411 in your browser, click on the result, and when the screen comes up, scroll down just slightly, enter your address, and your ballot and related information will be available. So let's get started. There are seven candidates for two Cupertino City Council seats, each with a four-year term. Five of the seven candidates are here with us today. The candidates have agreed to the format and the ground rules for this forum. I will pose questions, which were gathered in advance. Each question has a designated response time of 90 seconds, 60 seconds, or in a couple cases, just a show of hands. A timer will give the candidate visual signals to help pace their responses and to stop on time. Each candidate has agreed to be responsive to the questions they're asked, civil in the responses, not interrupt another candidate or the moderator, very important rule, not make any remarks that are personal in nature or directed to any individual. And if a candidate violates the ground rules more than twice, the candidate may be removed from the forum. We also ask that the candidate and the public, if you choose to reference a recording of this forum or any of our forums, to only do so in its entirety. You may not reference or take a clip of only a portion of the forum. Each candidate has two 30-second rebuttal opportunities they may use to rebut remarks from any other candidate. They may not use the rebuttal time just to add to their own comments or go off-topic. And if a candidate would like to use their rebuttal, they'll simply raise their hand. In advance of the forum, candidates were provided the first and last question. Now, one more item before we begin. For any candidate unable to attend today's forum, we extended the offer to read a brief statement prepared by the candidate. Only one candidate submitted a statement to be read. That was Hung Way, and I'm going to read her statement now. "A proud resident of Cupertino for over 30 years, Hung has dedicated herself to serving the city as a councilmember, mayor, and advocate for equity, safety, and education. During her time in office, Hung has worked tirelessly to secure funding for local schools, improve public safety, and protect open spaces. She has led efforts to support small businesses during the pandemic and champion policies that promote affordable housing and sustainable development. As a strong advocate for thoughtful, community-centered planning for the Valco site, Hung has pushed for a balanced approach that addresses both the need for housing and the concerns of residents while ensuring fiscal responsibility and prudent use of taxpayer resources. Hung is committed to creating a Cupertino that works for everyone, a place where families can thrive, local businesses can grow, and children have access to best educational opportunities. With your support, she will continue to advocate for policies that prioritize housing affordability, environmental sustainability, and smart growth while preserving the quality of life we all cherish. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please visit hungwayforcuppertino.com for more information." And I'd just like to repeat, the League read this statement on behalf of Hung Way. The League does not endorse or oppose any candidate or party, including for this race. And now, I want to extend a warm welcome to Claudio Bono, Barry Chang, Kitty Moore, Rod Sinks, and Gilbert Wong. The speaking order for the first question was randomly drawn, and the speaking order will shift with each question. Rod, Barry, Gilbert, and then Kitty is the order of the first question, and that's the reason they're sitting in the order they are today. Rod, to you first, why are you qualified to be on City Council? You have 90 seconds.
Testing? Oh, my gosh, okay. Thanks for hosting us. I'm Rod Sinks. Cupertino residents want results, and I have a track record of delivering them. As a councilmember, I fought to make Main Street Cupertino a vibrant hub. And now, it's time to build a downtown in our city at the old Valco site with entertainment, dining, and retail. And I have the expertise to negotiate a better project than that allowed by state law. I'll promote housing for teachers and families, which is vital for strengthening our schools. They are experiencing declining enrollment. As your mayor, I launched a groundbreaking bike pedestrian plan to ensure safer routes to school for our kids. I introduced SV Hopper shuttles to serve students, seniors, and commuters. And I'm proud to have led the charge for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, bringing us less expensive and greener electricity since 2017. As a board member and chair of the Bay Area Air District, I helped secure a deal with the cement plant to dramatically improve our air quality. As a trustee for FUHSD, I fought to maintain electives, expand transportation options, modernize our campuses, and enhance climate education. I'm a seasoned high-tech executive, a scout leader, a robotics mentor, and a proud past president of the Cupertino Rotary Club. I'm resident-focused and don't accept developer funding. You can check it out at rod sinks dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry?
Thank you for the League of Women and the Rotary Club, and thank you all coming. The reason I'm running, remember President Ronald Reagan in 1980 had a very famous quote, "Are you better off now?" So I'm asking Cupertino residents, are we better off now? We're in the budget deficit, and the community is not happy. I mean, if you go to Schofield, you go to Lindavisa, you will find out they're very unhappy. And they all because there's a small group stirring up, keep stirring up, and heading this Cupertino to the wrong track. And that's why I'm running. And just check it out, and then check it out my website, barryforcuppertino dot com. I don't want to go into the detail. If Cupertino continues this direction, I can guarantee you there will be more multiple housing units on Schofield Drive and on Lindavisa. If you get the incumbent, one of the incumbent, and then they run as a state. If you get those two come back, they took over the majority to revote, they will scrap everything and then make heading, leading the Cupertino to the wrong, wrong direction. We are in a pretty bad budget situation now. We might have to pay, stay back $80 million, and then we may lose $30 million every year. And that's because of so-called Better Cupertino. So come out and vote. This is a very important juncture. We got to do it, do it right for the Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert?
Good afternoon. My name is Gilbert Wong. I'm a very proud Cupertino Rotarian, and I want to thank the Cupertino Rotary Club as well as the League of Women Voters for hosting us this afternoon. I am a proud resident of Cupertino for over 30 years. My wife and I raise our two kids here. As a former Cupertino mayor and councilmember, I've always been passionate about serving our community. I'm running again because I believe of the need of a strong, experienced leadership to navigate the challenges we face, particularly in housing infrastructure and community development. My top priorities include addressing our housing needs in a balanced and thoughtful manner, improving local infrastructure, and fostering strong community connections. I want to ensure Cupertino remains a vibrant, inclusive place for families, students, and local businesses. Our diversity is our strength, and I want to continue building bridges between different communities to ensure everyone's voice is heard. I can see that on the Cupertino City Council that there has been some adverseness between Better Cupertino and All for Cupertino. I can assure you that I'm not on either side, but I believe of a cohesive of bridging communities together. I want to be that councilmember, to be strong, to bring people together. With my nine years of experience on the Cupertino City Council as well as eight years on the Cupertino and the Foothill Dance at Community College School Board, I believe that I am the right person to bridge our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Claudio?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for hosting again this event. My name is Claudio Bono, Cupertino resident for close to 11 years now. Been very active in my community. I'm the vice president and past president for the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. I'm a Rotarian. I'm a Cupertino Commissioner of Parks and Recreation in great standing. I enjoy staff. They respect me. I respect them. I've done a lot for my community and nonprofits. And I'm running because I am genuinely a concerned resident. First and foremost, I also am a managing director for two hotels, and primarily the Cupertino Hotel. And what I did is created a hub to make a tourist destination. I've brought millions of hotel taxes to the city of Cupertino. And I'm here to finally say, there is a fresh new face. There is a brand-new person here, first-generation immigrant that did it all by himself and that knows how to turn this downturn economy and make it profitable. It's time to remove the red tapes. It's time to actually build Cupertino for the next generation. I am that person. And if elected, let's be honest, we need to work on our housing affordability. And what better person than me? Look at me, I'm likable. Everybody would definitely want to work with me, and I think that being charming helps in making everything profitable. Visit bonoforcuppertino24 dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. Kitty?
Thank you, everyone, for hosting us. I am Kitty Moore. I am your current City Councilmember, and I served on the Planning Commission two years, and I've served on Council for four. I have a proven track record of looking out for your tax dollars in your health, safety, and welfare, which is the duty of a councilmember. I'm a civil engineer. I've worked on smart projects up to 300 acres. I'm also a certified paralegal, and I have basic and advanced certificates in environmental studies I completed this year, which went in depth about the California Environmental Quality Act, Phase One environmental site assessments, and California's climate laws like SB 32. I'm well-known for being detail-oriented and doing my homework. I have a proven track record of doing my fiduciary duty. Residents need to recall that we had a 14-year embezzlement from a city finance employee. I'm the councilmember who found that the city was keeping almost $65 million in a zero-interest-bearing checking account, losing us over $2 million in interest annually. That money has now been prudently invested. I also found that the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation, of which we wear two hats as councilmembers, we are directors of that corporation, had failed to file tax returns for the past 10 years, and I moved to get that fixed. I advocated for getting grant applications to see what outside money we can get. The Hopper was expanded into Santa Clara with a collaborative $8 million grant. My priorities are fiscal accountability, environment, and public safety, and I humbly seek your vote.
Thank you. Next question is, how will the needs of Cupertino's population 20 years from now be different from today? And how does your long-term view influence your current decision-making? Barry, the first question to you. You have 60 seconds.
It is common sense. People like California. You all like California. So we all move from different directions. When you have a population increase, of course you need a housing unit to have a place to stay. So housing unit is, of course, an increase. But then there's a group, a small group of people called Better Cupertino. They're just anti-any progression, anti-any rational, irresponsible. It's every Californian's responsible to handle this problem with the housing crisis. If we are not doing it, who else? And then they just keep rambling, rambling, stir up the community, make the community very unhappy. That's not the way Cupertino is supposed to be. That's not the way when I moved in in 1981. This area is much nicer, but with this group, no. So your vote is very important. Tell all your friends, every vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert? I'd be happy to. How will the needs of Cupertino's population 20 years from now be different from today? And how does that longer-term view influence your current decision-making?
Thank you very much. I think it's very important that for the next generation is that what will Allison and Emily be expected? I envision a Cupertino that remains a Model C, vibrant, inclusive, and innovative. Over the next decade, I want to see Cupertino leading the way in technology, education, and environmental sustainability. I want to be a place where families feel safe, where business thrive, and where people from all walks of life come together to solve the challenges we face. I see us continuing to become a balanced growth with preserving the character of our neighborhoods, investing in the infrastructure, and ensuring that Cupertino remains a place people are proud to call home. My vision is one community, working together to build a brighter future for everyone. I just dropped off Emily, our youngest daughter, at UC San Diego. And I remember when Allison, our older one, who's 25 right now, wanted to buy a house. And I feel that it's important that they can live in our community.
Thank you. Claudio?
Well, that's a wonderful question to begin with, and that is the reason why I want to be elected as the next councilmember, because I am running to build Cupertino for the next generation. I think, what kind of message are we sending to new youngsters that says that no one else can do it? So we need to offer a brand-new, fresh face and new energy, new leadership, and new opportunities, and that's why I'm running. And I think we need to make sure Cupertino is affordable. We need to take care of our teachers, first responders, make it available for all, especially on the affordable housing, and to make sure that it's affordable for all types of income, which will reduce also traffic. So I think that's why I'm this racist, because I need to take care of the next generation. And I'm ready to serve not this current one, but the next one, because it's a very consequential election, and I have the staff in mind when I'm running. I lift them up. I don't bring them down. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty?
All right. So, well, this is an area that my civil engineering background really helps with. So the population will be larger. If the current housing element alone is realized, we're going to have over a 30% increase in population. And that growth is going to cause serious impacts to traffic and other elements of our infrastructure, like our sewage, our water. And we're going to need to plan our transportation system out in order to accommodate this much growth. That's going to cost a lot of money, so we're going to need to have a funding source for it. So go back to the old saying, if you fail to plan, you're planning to fail. We need to have a plan for how we're going to deal with this much population increase. It's going to be costly, and we need to think about where that money's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod?
Well, we face many regional issues, and we need to work on them regionally, including the health of our local economy, housing, homelessness, crime, public safety, wildfire threats, rising insurance rates, costs, and reliability of our electricity supply, needs of our public schools, the roads and trails that we drive, ride and walk on. We need to deal with traffic, pollution, mitigating and adapting to climate. I've led many on these as president of the Cities Association, as first chair of SVCE, and as chair of the Bay Area Air District. And I want to continue to do that. We live in an ecosystem, and it's very important that we work together. If we build a downtown here, we'll find more reasons to spend our money right here in Cupertino. We'll improve our sales tax base, which is critical, since we've lost some $30 million annually in Apple sales tax due to a recent state ruling. And we need that money for city services, including public safety and road repair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rod. Next question. Cupertino underwent a civil grand jury investigation and an independent review of its governance practices. Now, with a little distance from those investigations, what's your opinion of the right balance between oversight by the City Council and the authority of the city manager over operations of the city? Gilbert, we'll start with you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, and you have 60 seconds. 60 seconds.
Okay, 60 seconds, fantastic. It's very important to understand what is a role of a councilmember. A role of a councilmember is that the five of us are elected by the people to set public policy. We only have one boss, and that boss is the city manager. We also have the city attorney. But the city manager runs the day-to-day affairs. I think that it's very important that we do not interfere in the day-to-day operations of our city. I am very disappointed of the grand jury, but we have set policies that will make sure that we do not have interference. I think that it's very important that we understand our roles and not interfere in the day-to-day affairs. I'm very fortunate to have a great city manager, and we need important to keep that city manager and our directors here. And I will make sure that we implement those policies.
Thank you. Claudio?
Well, once again, grand jury report, lawsuits, you name it. Can we do better than this? Seriously, I am generally and always been very successful as what I do. I lift up my staff. I don't demean them. And again, I want to be finally in the news for providing solutions to what we have as an issue in our city. I'm tired of all these red tapes and the no-voting nonstop in this council. It's been terrible from 2018 until 2022. That's why we have builders remedy. And at the end of the day, there's tons of shifting blames and lies going on. I want to make sure, and like I said earlier, I'm running also to protect our staff. There's been too many turnovers. Some people who have never worked before in their life don't know what it's about working with staff. Staff is what makes you successful, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty?
Thank you. So since that time, and actually concurrent with it, we have contracted with Moss Adams, who does an annual internal controls audit. And we have added a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. We've added a procurement officer who is providing training for all of the departments regarding our contracting process. We've also added a budget officer. If you've noticed, we've had a lot of improvements with regards to our budget. And this is all, I know a lot of you understand the total quality improvement process from your work. This is really what we're doing here, is that each year we're having different parts of the city evaluated. And that's important because we do not want to go back to the years of 14, the 14 years of embezzlement and the other issues that I mentioned in my opening comments. We need to have good, prudent oversight of the city. We should never have this 10-year period where we're not filing tax returns, such as what happened with the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation. But we're moving in the right direction. Things are getting better.
Thank you. Rod?
Yeah, citizens expect transparency from government. They expect that we are civil with one another, that we treat employees fairly, that we keep morale of staff high. Many of you have run companies or parts of companies, or you've been parts of companies, and you know what it takes to make a workforce that works together. Look, if we're not satisfied with what city staff is doing in some aspect, we have a right as councilmembers, as does the public, to weigh in with the city manager, but that's where it stops. We work through the city manager. If the city manager isn't getting the job done, then we can replace the city manager. But we have to be thoughtful about breaching that line. Our employees are the city manager and the city attorney. I'd say also that ethics is really important for City Council. We all have to observe a high standard of ethics, and we have to behave because we are all elected that serve on a council. We have to learn civility, how we get along with each other to have the dialogue on things we disagree.
Thank you. Barry?
I want to extend what Rod just said. Besides the ethic, the honest to the resident, to yourself, to this community, and to the country. Okay, we have pretty much mismanagement, and that's why I'm jumping back in to run. All the, since 2018, mismanagement one after another one. You have the former mayors claiming want to build a wall around Cupertino to keep everybody out of it. And you have another former mayor knowingly, the school population is dwindling, and then she's saying, no, no. And then we have another candidate here. She filed a lawsuit against this city employee clerk in 2018. And how can you expect the city will function if you have this kind of people in charge of the City Council, in charge of the Cupertino? The council job, five of us, majority decide hire manager.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to start with another question here. Residents of Cupertino look at the downtowns created in Mountain View and Sunnyvale. They experience Santana Row, and they want a similar vital downtown experience for Cupertino. Looking at Mountain View and Sunnyvale specifically, what lessons can be learned and applied to Cupertino when considering the creation of a vital downtown? Claudio will begin with you. You have 60 seconds.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I'm a Cupertino resident that lives, shops, and spend their money here in Cupertino. What we need to do, when you have 52 acres at Valco that still needs to be developed, something needs to be done. And I see as a hotel general manager for both in Cupertino and Sunnyvale the difference on how friendlier they are to businesses. I fight every day with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce to make sure that our small businesses don't leave. We need their taxes. So it takes someone, like I said, likable, who can approach other businesses that don't come with one of those minds that says everyone here is bad and criminals, like many others say. But we need to make sure we take care of amenities and have a real downtown Cupertino that we all deserve. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
Kitty?
Thank you. So Cupertino has forever wanted to have a downtown, and it's becoming even more challenging because of the housing element, having so many residential units that are coming in to the city. And what we're seeing with these projects is that they're asking to eliminate the retail component. In fact, the project at Foothill and Stevens Creek Boulevard was designated neighborhood commercial, and as you've seen, there is no commercial portion there. In order to have the retail part be successful, it needs to have a number of shops. And rather than having them just kind of isolated along Stevens Creek Boulevard, as we've seen with Shane Company, their relocation has caused them some difficulty, and we've tried to work to help them bring in more customers at their location with signage and improved frontage. So it's a tough problem. I think Valco has an opportunity. They're only at 230,000 square feet of retail. I'd love to see them have more.
Thank you. Rod?
Thank you. Well, let's build a downtown at the old Valco site. 52 acres that's been dormant for far too long. Do we simply want housing there? We could easily get a sea of townhomes, just a sea of townhomes, because they offer a developer good profit at low risk. The land is currently in the hands of one owner. If it's parcelized to sell three- and four-story townhomes to perhaps 1,500 owners, the land will never be reclaimed to build a downtown. Our schools will be stronger with a larger property base and with new housing for teachers and families. And building a downtown takes negotiation, the right economic mix. You may recall that state-entitled SB 35 project at the beginning of 2018, which had 20-story towers looming over the neighborhood to the west. During that year, we negotiated a better project with community benefits based on extensive resident input. And we can do that again with a strong council majority.
Thank you. Barry.
Yes, just want to extend what Rod said. 2018, Rod and I and Sabita, we three of them negotiate very hard with the developer and come out with the civic center, the performing arts center, and then that would be a real downtown. You know, even the one we approved on the main street, everybody can feel a little bit downtown flavor, but it's too small. Valco is a good project, is a good location to have it. And we approved that plan, three to two, but the new council scrapped it. So that's why I say your vote is very important. Tell all your friends to come out and vote. Vote those people against the development, the harmonia of the society of the community. Vote them out. Don't let them continue to stay, and that would be really bad for Cupertino. And then we will have it. If we get back in, would we negotiate, have downtown in Valco? And then that will be really great for the community here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty, you want to use a rebuttal? Please.
Thank you. So this is regarding Valco. So every version of Valco worsened the housing, the jobs-to-housing ratio, and the current version, the SB 35, has 809 affordable units in it. It has the most affordable units of any version of the project. It still has the 2 million square feet of office in it. Right now, we're in an office glut, so it's questionable whether or not the developer really is going to be building that. But those 890 units are worth millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to us. For example, Veranda, 1,350.
I'm sorry, it was 32 seconds. Thank you very much. Gilbert.
Thank you very much. So the question is that, do we want a downtown Mountain View or downtown Sunnyvale? And the answer is yes. But the problem is that we have a dysfunctional city council. We have 52 acres at Valco, and there is an opportunity to build a really great site. But why is it not going forward? Because we get sued or we have a referendum. I think that it's very important to get a person who's elected that can bring people together. Our dream is that we will have a downtown that's unique to Cupertino. I think that we have to live with SB 35, that we will have a mixed-use that's very similar to something like Santana Row. Main Street Cupertino is something that we can be proud of. Is it perfect? No. But the most important thing is, how can we bring people together, not have the infighting, and not have a project that's failed? We need to have the right project, and I'll get the job done.
Thank you. Claudio. Sorry, lost track. New question. Considering the $30 million drop in city revenue, how would you go about diversifying the city's sources of revenue? Please be specific and describe what you would do, what investments from the city, if any, would be required, and what would it, how long would it take to see meaningful results? And Rod, we'll start with you. You have 60 seconds.
Thank you. Well, as I've said, I think good old-fashioned economic development is the right answer to this question, and yes, it will take the better part of a decade, because we've delayed for the better part of a decade in getting Valco started. You may remember the original project in 2016, the Hills. We've had subsequent projects, and the truth is, because of all of this, we've not gotten the job done. So we need to get that started. We need to get the economic flywheel going here and do the thing that we know in a capitalist system is proven to work, which is, we give a developer rights and entitlement to build something, and we give them enough economic incentive to invest here in Cupertino. And when we do that, as I've said, we'll improve our sales tax base, which is critical given that $30 million hole. That primarily is, that's the Apple sales tax we've lost due to a recent state ruling. And then we'll do much bigger, we'll do better with a bigger project at Valco, thanks to property tax.
Thank you. Barry.
Just want to extend it out, what Rod said. The reason we are losing Apple's sale tax is because of the previous council majority. We're so stupid. When we have the money, the Chinese old saying, don't show off. And then we have the mayor, former mayor, just running around saying, we're going to build a wall. The states look at it and say, okay, you're making all this trouble, okay, you get all this money from Apple, I'm going to distribute it around the other city. That's called stupidity, okay? And you want to continue to elect this kind of people to the council, then you'll be suffering, Cupertino will be suffering more. So this is very important, to have Valco built, and then the sale tax will increase, and then find out a way. For example, pickleball is a very good game. If we have hosting a pickleball tournament, we increase the sales revenue in Cupertino. So that's why we have to work together.
Thank you. Gilbert.
Thank you. I think that it's very challenging, that unfortunate situation, that we have lost the sales tax from Apple Computer, that other cities wanted to get our business's business sales tax. I believe that city council did the right thing by not renewing the Fourth of July fireworks. Does not mean that we're not going to have it, it's just put on hold. We have to spend within our means. I think that the other challenging thing is that, how can we raise revenue? How can the city grow in our revenue? It's very important to allow development to come in. As we get new housing, new folks coming in, then it will fill in our schools. The last thing I want to do is raise taxes. And if I was going to raise taxes, I want to make sure that we outreach to the community to make sure that if we do various things like trans occupancy tax, which I know that you will not like that, but it brings in some revenue to us, or raising the user utility tax, but that would be the last resort to build up revenue.
Thank you. Claudio.
I don't know if you were talking to me, but I love taxes. Things need to be reworked. We need to work on our taxes. At the end of the day, I work in hotels. We were a few months ago at city council, and they were asking to, for example, move from 12 to 15, which is crazy, because we're not San Francisco, LA, Miami. So I said, hey, we can do 13. We left money on the table. At the end of the day, I was even offered years ago the economic development position as well, because at the end of the day, what I do and what I've done in over 10 years is generate over $150 million of revenue, and I know how to do this. And San Jose came out two days ago that they actually reworked some and give incentive to work out empty offices. So there are things that needs to be done. You need to ask yourself, why Cupertino, the capital of Silicon Valley, have to wait for other neighboring city to actually come up with solution, and we cannot, because of the infighting and the red tape and investigative thing, like it works well for Hollywood, but not for here?
Thank you. Kitty.
So the original premise, the $30 million drop in revenue, that was from a peak, so it's really more like about $15 million. So with regards to the CDTFA audit, the council members are not allowed to confirm or deny whoever was being audited by the state that did not have anything to do with the city council, that there was an audit of a company. With regards to the retail at Valco, would that save Cupertino's financial situation? 230,000 square feet, even if it were to generate $700 per square foot of sales, that would be about $1.6 million to our coffers, so that's not going to make up that shortfall. I don't believe in increasing the taxes until the budget has been, had the fluff within it eliminated. For instance, we were budgeting for over $600,000 for extra library hours. Our property taxes are, through the county, we're actually paying for that, so I got that removed off of our budget. We also, as I said earlier, had $65 million not invested.
Thank you. Thank you. Next question. What more should the city do to unlock the potential for existing and new businesses? And Barry, we'll start with you, and you have 60 seconds.
We have, first, we have to get the Valco going. And the Valco is not going to be built. If we have the anti-development people sitting on the council, give them all kind of trouble, they are not going to build. No developer will build, because they are going to lose money dealing with it. Without Valco, it would be hard to increase sale tax. And then once we lose Apple's sale tax, that's a larger one, okay? Unless we get it going right away, it's hard. Then the other one is, you have to work together to find a solution. As I said earlier, pickleball is a very good exercise, and it's a fun game. It's bringing the community together, fitting for all shape, all age, all gender. It's bringing the community together. If we can host a tournament, we increase the sale tax inside Cupertino, and it will bring Cupertino to a good name, too. So there's many ways to do it. We just have to find the right people working together.
Thank you. Gilbert.
Supporting local businesses has always been a priority for me. Cupertino's small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and we need to ensure they thrive. I believe creating policies that reduce bureaucratic barriers and make it easier for small businesses to operate and grow. I also support initiatives that encourage shopping locally and strengthening partnership with our Cupertino Chamber of Commerce to attract new businesses. With my experience serving on various boards, including the Deans of Foothill Community College District, I understand how important education and workforce development are to economic growth. We must foster opportunities for innovation and ensure Cupertino remains a hub of technology, education and local business success. I think that we have a jewel in our backyard with our great public schools and Deans of College, that we need to invest more in our technical skills to make our students stronger. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may ask you to repeat the question, I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to.
Because I couldn't hear you.
What more should the city do to unlock the potential for existing and new businesses?
Well, once again, first of all, is to understand the struggle we're going through, especially still after COVID. At the Chamber of Commerce, this is what we do every day. We're trying to help everyone so that they don't leave, because their tax dollars is important to us. So we need to be innovative, we need to be open, we need to be a partner, and we need to learn from other cities, because at this point, I've been here since early 2014, I haven't seen us taking the helm and be a protector, but more finger pointing and saying people are criminals. And I think that's very disgraceful in our city, being considered actually the heart of Silicon Valley. So, and if there is someone that can actually help the businesses, here I am. I've been serving on that nonprofit for over 10 years.
Thank you. Kitty.
Thank you. And thank you for rereading the question, that it's regarding businesses and not specifically retail. So in 2019, I requested that the Economic Development Committee be codified. It finally came to council at the end of 2022. We seated, or we had like tons of applicants, we selected 11. The following, within the following two months, that Economic Development Committee was completely abolished by the new council. I would like to see it come back. We do have an Economic Development Manager who is working very hard to connect with the business community. One of the problems we have, because this is a general business question, is that we have an office glut. We need the business community, the property owners, to actually lower their leases and stop leaving their, what they're trying to get up so high, because it's driving people away. I know that San Jose is trying to shore up the property owners. I don't think that's the right thing to do. This is a capitalism. They need to lower the lease rates and bring people in and diversify from just having one main employer. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod.
Well, what should the city do for economic development and encouraging new business? Timing is everything. When I was mayor in 2015, Splunk was eager to find a South Bay home in Cupertino. There was inadequate office inventory at the time. They ultimately chose to go to Santana Row. Now, if we had had adequate office, they would have preferred Cupertino, and I believe businesses still would if we were able to get development done. With a downtown that could look like, in fact, Santana Row, we could diversify our tax base, bringing in new businesses, not be so reliant on Apple. Main Street Cupertino is good, but frankly, it's too small to create that real destination that we once had as a mall, a place that you go to for coffee and books, a place that you go to for theater and a restaurant. And that's what we need to create. And when we do that, by creating more of a destination, we strengthen Cupertino as a destination, making all the businesses stronger.
Thank you very much. So the Valco site, mentioned several times already, is critical to meeting our state-mandated housing requirements. Further, what is built or not built at the Valco site will be heavily influenced by the city's working relationship with Sand Hill Properties. So first, via a show of hands, do you agree with my statement? That makes it simpler. Thank you. So, given you all said yes, what will you do to improve the relationship with Sand Hill Properties? Please be specific, and Gilbert, we'll start with you. You have 60 seconds.
Thank you. I think that it's important to have trust, and I don't see the trust between the council members, some of the council members with the developer. I think that it's very important that we listen to what Sand Hill Property needs and to make sure that we get the job done. I have just seen a lot of roadblocks that was given in the past, and we need to listen to what our voters say, listen to what the property owner needs, and see how we can break through the bureaucracy to move forward. Once we get this project built, they will come. And there were several renovations of this project, but we have to live what we have now. Is there opportunity in the future to have some changes? Yes. Do we need to have all those offices? No. What do we need? We definitely need more affordable housing, and that's what I'm hearing when I knock door to door, talking to voters like you.
Thank you.
I think.
Claudio, please go.
It's my turn. So, community outreach is important, and I think that Valco, up to a point, has done a good job, but we need to go back to the board, and basically, they need to have a mutual understanding, but we're about to create a legacy for Cupertino for the next generation. I want to see a movie theater. I want to see a place where I can have fun, a bowling alley, something. And at the end of the day, we're all going outside of Cupertino, because we don't need that, we don't have anything here. So it's very important that we need to understand the issues, we need to have a community outreach and make sure that what the residents want is met, rather than talk about pollution and CQ and all of that, which whenever you buy a brand-new, you tore something, you always have issues with the soil and this and that. So let's be friendly with developers who actually want to spend money here in our city. Negotiate and be understanding.
Thank you. Kitty.
Thank you. So one of the things we recently did, which I'm sure Sand Hill Property Company is happy about, is we waived $77 million worth of fees, and the bulk of that had to do with the below-market rate fees, because the project is providing 890 affordable units. And so that was a huge gift to the developer from the city of Cupertino. And I think that goes a long way towards avoiding what we saw in Sunnyvale, which was years and years of litigation. I've reached out to Sand Hill before. I've actually taken two of their principals out to lunch and talked about the project when it came to the council regarding the fees that were waived. I suggested to one of their principals, who was in the audience, that they build something similar to what we see at Santa Clara Square or what we see at Rivermark, because we know they're more than capable of building something human-scale like at Main Street.
Thank you. Rod.
Well, if we, if our primary dialogue with developers, or major developers at least, is through our attorneys, they're certainly going to be discouraged. Maybe they'll build townhomes. They'll flip the properties and make a quick buck and go elsewhere. But if we want to do something bigger, something better, we need patient investment. And to do that, you know, we actually have to be in relationship with developers. The city staff does, with the encouragement of a council. And I talked to the head of Sand Hill Property Company in June, and he'd like to make a big patient investment in our city, but it's going to take a strong council majority for him to have the confidence to come back and consider something better. So I think we need to form those, we need to reform those relationships, because frankly, come 2019, developers took their money and their capital and their investments to other cities.
Thank you. Barry.
To get it going, you have to respect each other. If there's no respect, there's no trust. With the current sitting council member and her running mate, giving the developer so much hard time, who can trust them? No one. So when I negotiate with Apple for the sale tax increase, I'm alone by myself, but I respect Apple a lot. I did not trash Apple at all. I went in, I talked to them more than 13 times at the Apple campus. And then so I come out with a very good solution. It's a win-win solution. It's 30% increase on the sale tax rate hike for Cupertino, and that's why it's the largest revenue for Cupertino. Same here, dealing with each other, dealing with the resident, dealing with the developer, you got to respect. you got to respect them, you got to, you cannot just trash them. And if we continue to have them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a long question, and you'll have 90 seconds for it. Over the last 13 years, the city has received several reports about the city hall being seismically unsafe. The decision is now again before the city council, with the debate being about whether the city should replace, renovate, or just retrofit city hall. What do you believe is the correct approach? Replace, renovate, or just retrofit? Please explain your rationale behind your choice, including total cost, how it will be paid for, and what it will take to move this project forward. Claudio, we're beginning with you, and you have 90 seconds.
Perfect. First and foremost, I strongly believe in retrofit. What we need to understand here is that there is a mix in our city. Some people think we shouldn't do anything at all, but keep in mind, if there is a seismic activity during office hours, we're going to have a lot of death on our hands, and that is the truth. So doom if we do something, doom if we don't. So I strongly believe that our city manager is empowered enough to know what needs to be done under some directions, but retrofit is fine, but I would more advocate to move the city to make sure that they're safe, all the employees, while we are retrofitting. And actually, it would be cheaper, achievable, and that would solve a lot of things. Now, again, there's only 2% empty offices in Cupertino at the end of the day, so we are in a good place in the market. Could we buy something in the meantime and then resell later? That too, all is possible. So we need to be diligent in this decision and take the right approach. We still can do a community outreach, but we got to do something because every single day, and we are approaching the anniversary of a major earthquake. It's going to happen again. The question is, are we prepared? Are we going to do something about it? Thank you.
Kitty.
Okay. With regards to the vacancy rate for office, in San Jose, for example, it's 31%. That's 3.4 million square feet of vacant office right now. That's huge. Okay, so I was on the City Hall Subcommittee, and I served with council member John Willie, who is, holds a, former council member, he holds a PE in civil engineering and mechanical engineering. We met about five or six times with staff, and ultimately, the staff came to us and made the recommendation that we remodel and seismically retrofit the building. The building was improperly retrofitted back in 1987. There were some errors in the calculations, so I believe it does need to be, do the seismic retrofit and do the remodel of that building. And we were ready to go, the council had approved this November 15th, 2022, to move forward and have that happen, and they would be already well under construction. We also had a plan for the Emergency Operations Center, which is where the old council chambers are in the center of the first floor, which is a huge wasted area. We have had a plan in place, which did not continue, but it was to put the EOC in the Torrey Avenue Annex Building, which was a huge cost-saving to the city to do that. So we need to really be prudent with our money and definitely look out for the resident, not the residents, but our employees there, and I'm really, really saddened that the current council did not agree with our plans.
Thank you. Rod.
You know, it's much less expensive to get something big as a public works project done if it's part of a negotiated agreement, and that's exactly what we had in the development agreement in 2018 that we negotiated with the Valco. We did this with Amy Chan, who's in the audience, and with Savita, and with Barry and I, and we worked hard to get a fair deal with the city hall, a new city hall as a community benefit. You know, when we have an earthquake, we have a crisis here, we need the city to function to serve all of us. We need to house public safety employees here, the people that work, the people that serve us, and when we construct a city hall that's safe, we attract more employees, we attract employees who want to come to work here. Take a look at our neighboring cities, Sunnyvale just got one done. Mountain View's long had a modern city hall. We certainly need one. But again, our cost to do that in a negotiated agreement with the developer was about 60% of what it would have cost us. So these are the kinds of benefits that are nurtured the benefit of the community. Some people say, well, it's a bribe. No, a bribe is for personal gain. We're talking about a benefit for the community that comes as a result of saying, we're going to give you something in a negotiation, what you want as part of that 2018 negotiated plan, and we're going to get something, which is a new city hall which serves all of us and serves our employees in a safer, better-lit space.
Thank you. Barry.
I always believe the money should be spent for the resident, not for the city council. So that's why every time they renovation or whatever for the city hall, I voted no. I'm also have a master's degree in civil engineering, specializing in structural engineering. To solve the seismic problem for the current location, all you need to do is just replace the rooftop. That's my opinion, okay, from the civil engineering, structural engineer calculation. You just replace the tar roof, the composition shingle, you reduce the weight, you'll be much safer. And I totally agree with Rod, so that's why I, we, we work very hard, negotiate with the developer to have the, to have the civic center in Valco Shopping Center, with the performing arts center, would bring in the downtown area. If that's the case, I will go for it. But for the current location, I only would spend the money to replace the roof, but I wouldn't spend more than that. The rest of the money should go to serve the resident. For example, Open Queen Anne Center, senior center on the weekend, now it's closed because of budget crisis. So we have all this nice facility, the resident cannot enjoy it, so what the facility for? So that's what we have the thinking, serve the resident, that's the most important job for the city council, and that, that's where my position is.
Thank you. Gilbert.
Here we go again, the indecisiveness of the city council. Safety is number one. We need to make sure that all of our employees are safe. I agree with our city manager that we should buy another building and quickly move our employees to a safer building. Number two, the budget is very tight. We need to make sure that when, when we were going to either retrofit or build a new city hall or add more library space, I had a decision, and I knew that we were divided. Savita and Rod said that we don't need an additional library room, but Barry and Darcy said we need it. I know that things will not get done right away, but I had to invest and choose which one. I chose the library, and we're very proud to have opened a new library room expansion. Now is the time to make sure that we have a renovated city hall, just like we see in Sunnyvale and we see in Mountain View. An innovative city with Apple Computer, and we have an old, old city hall. What's first, our safety is more important.
Go ahead, please.
So, that library was about the most expensive room known to mankind. I mean, we did get some grants for it. I'm happy to have a library room, but honestly, that, that money should have gone to take care of public safety first, take care of housing our employees first. And then we could have negotiated with the county to make a bigger investment in the library. But, you know, it's like first things first. If your city hall is broken and it may collapse in an earthquake, it's just not okay, and we should have made that investment in city hall, in my view.
Thank you. Our next question, and Rod will kick us off on this one, is Cupertino has a low rate of crime when compared with nearby cities. Nevertheless, what more should the city do to keep its citizens safe?
And this is how long?
60 seconds.
60. Okay. So, you know, the sheriff serves us really well. The sheriff is sensitive to the needs of the community. I know before this Rotary Club, Bob Johnson, when he was elected, soon after he was and took office, he talked to us about the things that make us safe, the cultural awareness of understanding our different communities here and the fact that we don't all speak English equally well. We are well-served by the sheriff. We ought to all keep in mind that we contract with the sheriff. We could elect to have a police force like Sunnyvale does or Los Altos does, but we have real advantages in contracting with the sheriff. They bring in lots of resources. They have bomb squads and all kinds of things, a helicopter when people go missing, and we need to have the revenue to continue to honor our contract with the sheriff.
Thank you. Barry.
We need to, for this public safety, if we continue the wrong mismanagement the way it was, then we make, the deficit may be getting bigger and bigger, then we may lose the money to, to hire more sheriff and hire more firefighter. So this is a critical point to have, to vote for the right person in, on the council to make the right decision for this city. Otherwise, continue the way, mismanagement like what we have now, we may end up having a much bigger hole on the deficit. Then, once the deficit with a bigger hole, then what are you going to do? Cut the service? Cut the, cut the public health? Cut the firefighter? That's not going to be good for the city. So that, the most important is your job as a citizen, you have to come out and vote, and then vote the right person for this council to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert.
Public safety is very important to me and to the residents of Cupertino. We're very proud to have the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Department represent us, as well as the Santa Clara County Fire District as well, too. I think that it's very important that we keep, that any additional home invasion or car break-in is one too many, and we need to make sure that, as Rod was saying, that we have multilingual information out there. The other thing is that as we have more housing that's growing over there, I think it's very important to have a fire department in the eastern Cupertino. As more development is going in there, we need to make sure that we have more sheriff services and a firehouse that can be counted on. Thank you.
Claudio.
For me, more than ever, two years ago when I ran, I talked about public safety. Our city changed. I do not recognize it right now. All my life, I've had achievements, achievements, and achievement. If you Google my name now, what will you see? Death threats. Look at me. Do I look like a bad guy? Do I deserve that? Does it create issues with my family? Yes, it does. But I'm not going to be silenced, and more than ever, we spent about $15 million a year by contracting it with the sheriff. I'm so thankful to have them. I think we need to make sure we're negotiating and make sure that we feel safe and have more presence, more than ever. No one knows this, but I'll tell you, I do run fast. So, just for anyone out there who wants to know, I do run fast, but I will not be silenced either, and what's the price of life? So I think I'm attacked also because I have integrity, I'm confident, and I tell the truth, that what makes a difference. So it's very important, public safety for me.
Thank you. Kitty.
Thank you. So, I'm not getting any younger, we're getting more people in the city, and we're going to need quick routes to stroke centers and other emergency care facilities within the city, and hopefully, we can have some of those right within Cupertino. With regards to the fire department, this growth that we're having in the urban woodland interface is resulting in some homeowners being unable to get fire insurance, and we need to make sure that there is a good safety brake. With regards to our law enforcement officers, Prop 47 needs reform. Prior to its passage, if somebody was arrested, they would go to jail, and that worked as a deterrent, and now they just, we have these smash and grabs and they just get let, let out. We also need help with regards to the fentanyl and synthetic opioid crisis, and that, pardon, which is why I support Prop 36, which will address both of these unintended consequences of Prop 47. Last night, we passed the automatic license plate readers for going across Cupertino.
Thank you. This brings us to our last question. And again, for the audience, they were provided the question in advance. Barry will start with you, and the question is, what question do you wish we had asked you during this forum? And you have 90 seconds. I can repeat.
The question is, this, this, Shivi, what's your voting record? Tell us the honest, how you vote on your past. We have, we have a council member sitting here, a candidate sitting here, says she, she's for the housing element, but on May 14th this year, she voted no, and that causing all this problem in, in all this residential community. If she cannot be honest to herself, to the community, then how can she be honest for everybody here? An illegal woman in the Rotary Club, she asked this question, what is your voting record? How can this candidate be the best candidate?
Sorry.
You're done.
I'm done.
Thank you. Kitty? Excuse me, Gilbert, sorry.
No worries. A question that I would have asked is, how do you plan to foster inclusivity and community engagement in Cupertino, especially given the city's diverse population? Cupertino's diversity is one of its greatest assets, and I am committed to ensure all voices are heard. As mayor and council member, I focus on bridging gaps between different communities, and that remains a priority for me. We need to create more opportunities for residents to engage with city government through regular community meetings, cultural events, and online platforms that encourage participation. I am proud of my record working with diverse communities across Cupertino, and I want to continue fostering an environment where everyone, regardless of background, feels welcome and empowered to contribute to our city's future. One of the things I'm very proud of was, is to found the Cupertino-Buonishwar Sister City. We have four great sister cities, which includes Cupertino, Italy, the one in Japan, or am I going blank now, Gilbert? Buonishwar, India, as well as Shinju, Taiwan, Toyokawa, Japan, I'm looking at listed right now. And I think that by having students go to these different countries and, and immerse themselves to feel, and it doesn't matter which continent you are, maybe in Europe or Asia, that you, you get a sense that, that the world is very small and Cupertino is our home and we celebrate our diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudio.
So, the question you would have liked to ask is, why does it take so long to get things done in our city? I arrived here and I have a picture of me, I am happy to share, in April, December 2014, about the housing element. So, at the end of the day, there's too much division in our city. Everyone is fighting against each other instead of working with each other. And look at me, I'm a happy camper. I'm here to make, I only love one thing, is to be successful, and that's why I envision for my city. That's why my top priorities include common sense and good governance, so that we actually don't lose, again, control of our own city, build affordable housing, blending of our neighborhood, and also supporting small businesses. And in this year, what, like I said, what's in mind is the city staff. I want to make sure that they're protected, they don't leave, because if you do vote for the wrong candidates, automatically, that's what's going to happen. Don't vote for your friends, but also vote for the future, and that's why we're trying to do vote number three on the ballot. My name is Claudio Bono, please visit bonoforcupidino24.com. Bring your popcorn for the next city council meeting if you like that. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to use a rebuttal?
To use my 30-second rebuttal and then get into the 90-second, what question I wished I was asked, is that okay?
I'm sorry, say, yes.
I want to do the rebuttal and then move into the.
As long as it's not related to your question.
Exactly.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I want to, I've been accused of a lot of things, so I want to read from the minutes, November 15th, 2022. The final motion regarding the housing element, Moore moved and Chow seconded to direct staff to publish the draft housing element on Friday, November 18th, 2022, and to solicit public feedback for at least 30 days, and submit an informational item on the January 17th council agenda. And three, incorporate comments received in the draft housing element and submit the document to the State Housing and Community Development Department for review on January 20th, 2023. Okay?
Do you want to use a rebuttal? Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. Once again, this shift of blame is annoying to me like there is no tomorrow. On October and November 15th, indeed, it shows that they would have never been ready. Once they submitted a draft, it needed to be filtered, and it would have taken close to a year. Once again, they had years to fix this. Thanks to them, we have the builder's remedy, so don't believe the lies and the shifting of blame, because she had four years, they have done nothing. So what's happening right now, and why residents are upset, is because of their builder's remedy. I'm kind of annoyed to even have to come here and, ugh, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, you want to use a rebuttal?
Rebuttal on what Kitty just said. Okay. I want to say.
30 seconds.
When you voted no on May 14th, you were fully aware that we're causing the problem for the neighborhood. The builder, the, the building remedy will come in place. The city will lose the control of approving any project. So you were fully aware, and you voted no, and you lied to the residents, say, oh, I can help you, we can bring the lawsuit. City is in deficit. You're going to sue the state. The cap, this Cupertino is not meeting the state law, and you're going to win. Forget about it. Don't be so stupid.
Thank, thank you.
Rebuttal from me, too.
We've started something here. You want to use your last rebuttal?
Yes, I, I would. Well, all I'd say is, we have choices to make. We can either take charge of our land use, navigating the state law, be effective in how we work with people who actually build things here, or we can talk through lawyers. And we've, there's been a lot of legal talk here, a lot of bickering about the details, but the main point is if we want to be effective, we've got to encourage economic development in the city, and that's it.
Thank you. So, okay, please, go ahead.
Might as well. As you can see, that we have a very dysfunctional city council and a dysfunctional candidates here that have different ideas. My theme is to building bridges, is to make sure that how can we get people to agree and go forward with the majority, and then not have the minority go after the majority? That's why I believe that I'm the great candidate to get elected. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kitty, now you get to respond to the question.
Oh, oh, excellent. So we're at the 90-second part. So what I wish I had been asked is what great things have happened in Cupertino over the past four years, and I'm going to roll the credits. We opened the Westport Senior Below Market Rate Project, 48 senior units that are affordable. We have the Mary Avenue Housing Project for people with developmental disabilities. This is a project unique to Cupertino. The Jolly Man All-Inclusive Playground broke ground. The sports center was protected from being torn down and given to developers. City Hall was protected from being torn down and given to developers. We had the Memorial Park Pond Repurposing, which won Project of the Year Award. The city of Cupertino was recognized as climate action leader on the CDP 2022 A-list. Lehigh Cement Plant was shut down permanently. We supported Don't Chop the Top. That's a Joe Semidion, Supervisor Semidion initiative. Cupertino was awarded over $8 million to improve and expand Hopper, which was previously Via. The Regnar Creek Trail Project wins Project of the Year Award. The city council celebrated the Cupertino library expansion ribbon cutting. Lawrence Mitty property was annexed into the city of Cupertino. And we had extra two residential projects out on Foothill Expressway. There's more, but I don't really have time to read it. I want you to remember to please vote for me in November. I've been a very hard-working, diligent steward for your finances and public safety, protecting your health, safety, and welfare over the past six years now that I've served on the Planning Commission and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod?
Well, the question is, who else do you support and why? My team is out knocking on doors for Hung Way and Rod Sinks, and why? Because she did an outstanding job as mayor in 2023, when Sheila and JR joined her in a new council majority, restoring morale, ethics, and civility at city hall, and led the city to get our state mandated housing element approved. Because despite her illness, she remains a well-known, popular leader who can win this election. And for the two seats on the council, Hung and I have the sole endorsement of the county Democratic Party, the Silicon Valley Asian Pacific American Democratic Club, and the League of Conservation Voters. Hung and I have the sole endorsement of Congressman Ro Khanna, and we have solely endorsed each other. Let's not go back to the dark ages of city hall with grand jury reports and investigations highlighting council misbehavior, lack of economic development that should be a key engine for the city. There are some very tall tales being propagated by some candidates and their acolytes. They're running strong campaigns. With your help to fund our campaigns or walk door-to-door for us, we'll get out a better message to voters and gain a supermajority to finally negotiate the downtown we deserve. Thanks for attending, and thanks to Cupertino Rotary and the Chamber and the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. That was your last question, and I want to extend my thanks to the candidates. Thank you for caring about our community enough to run for office. And a big thank you from the League to Rotary Club of Cupertino and Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Just two more comments. Please do vote, but preferably before November 5th. And if you like this event, you'll love our upcoming event and candidate forums in Cupertino and Sunnyvale, and a comprehensive review of the ballot measures. Just visit our website, l w v c s dot org for dates, times, and registration. And if you'd like more information that is nonpartisan, please pick up a copy of our recommended sites for election, and I think Pam told me they're right on this table over here. The sheet also includes a calendar of our events. Thank you all so much.
One more round of applause for the candidates. And one more round of applause for Tracy Edwards and the League of Women Voters. Thank you all for coming, and have a good day.